Call the meeting to order for the January 20th, 2020 Waverly City Council meeting to order. Have the roll call, Carla.
Oh, four. Here.
Here.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Lazer.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And Kingness is asking.
Correct. Thank you. We will move on to item C, approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries and approved. Item D, approval of the minutes of the January 6th, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the January 6th, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. And a second?
Second, Ben.
Over seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes is passed. Item E, community highlight, recognition of the Waverly Shell Rock High School Go-Hawk Dance Team for winning the 2020 state champion Class IV Hip-Hop. Jory, come on forward. I'll let you take a moment if you'd like to kind of explain what this is all about there briefly, Jory, for us. When and where and how?
On December 6th, the dance team competed at the Iowa State Dance Team Championship. There's nearly 4,000 dancers in attendance at the competition, about 253 teams. We competed in the Class VI Hip-Hop Division and won our first state championship.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
Excellent. So, come on forward here. Carly can round out the names and get them around us for a photo, so.
It's Jory. Thank you. Victoria Albrecht?
Yeah.
Riley Viedeman?
Thank you.
Ellie Booth? Olivia Chapin? Romina Valdez?
Thank you.
Congrats. You have that?
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
It's a wonderful show and talk. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And you don't have to run off. You can hear all about the audit and everything else. Give them a moment. All right. Item F, public comments on items not on the agenda. We'd like to please limit our comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments? All right. Seeing none, I don't think we have any written comments to the council either.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to item G, the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item number one, approve the purchase of a 2020 Gail AL-750 compact wheel loader for the Public Services Department from Star Equipment of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the purchase price of $65,198. Item two, approve the purchase of a 2020 Massey Ferguson 7720S four-wheel-drive tractor with cab for the Public Services Department from Dyke Implement of Waverly, Iowa for the purchase price of $105,798. Item three, set the public hearing date to review the Airport Obstruction Removal 2020 Project Plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for February 17th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers of City Hall. Item four, set the public hearing date to review the Fourth Street Southwest Iowa 116 and 10th Street Southwest Improvement Project Plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for March 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers of City Hall. Set the public hearing date to review, number five, set the public hearing date to review the 20th Street Northwest Improvements 2020 Project Plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for March 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers of City Hall. Item six, set the public hearing date to review the Bitimus Seal Coat Program 2020 Projects Plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for March 16th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers of City Hall. Item seven, pay request from Snyder and Associates for the Fourth Street Southwest Reconstruction 2020 for the amount of $35,781.75. Item eight, pay request from Snyder and Associates for the 10th Street Southwest Improvements 2020 for the amount of $21,750.50. Pay request from Midland GIS Solutions for the GIS data collection 1T19 for the amount of $25,000. Item 10, pay request from Matt Construction Incorporated for the Waverly Exchange Renovations 2019 for the amount of $3,133.09. Item 11, pay request from WHKS and Company for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $11,231.04. Item 12, pay request from DOHKS and Company for the Business 218 North Resurfacing 2020 for the amount of $903.50. Item 13, pay request from Stegy Construction Incorporated for the Waverly Senior Housing Building Project for the amount of $196,013.50 to be paid by Waverly Senior Housing. Number 14, pay request from AHTS Architects for the Waverly Senior Housing Building Project for the amount of $3,000 to be paid by the Waverly Senior Housing. 15 is a Class C liquor license for the Waverly Area Veterans Post. Item 16 is Class C liquor license for Joe's Nighthawk. Item 17 is a Class C liquor license for Tapatio Mexican Grill, pardon me. Item 18 is a Class E liquor license for Casey's General Store, number 3763. 19 is an ownership update for Casey's General Store, number 3763. And item 20 is cash disbursements for December 2019. Seek a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On item one, we have a, and I think I know the answer, and I've heard this asked before. We've got a bid for a John Deere and a bid for a Gail. It's like a $6,000 difference. I'm just wanting to know staff's thought process on that. We've got a lower bid, but it's not a local bid, and I'm looking at different pieces of equipment, so I can't even tell what, if it is the lowest bid or if it's not.
Are you wanting to effectively pull this item from the consent calendar?
We may not need to.
Is this a quick item that Mike or James can address on that?
I'm not sure the question actually. You're wondering why we didn't buy a deer for 6,000 more or?
Right. It looks like it could be a better bid, but I don't know because I don't know this equipment.
Well, the low bid that actually satisfies the bid requirements is what we generally take. We don't have a local preference in any of our ordinances or anything like that. So, low bid was the one that we're presenting to council to purchase. When we're looking at tax dollars, we always go low bid if it satisfies the requirements. So, I'm not sure what the question is. It's low bid.
Well, I mean, when you do warranty, and I just don't know if there's, I mean, I bought out-of-town equipment too, and it's probably for these same reasons. But, you know, is there expense in additional warranty, travel time, that sort of issue?
Usually, we've been delivered right to here, so we aren't going to pick it up.
As far as maintenance?
I don't know what's going to break. I'm not sure what maintenance cost will be on something, but I don't know what's going to break on it necessarily. If you'd like to introduce a local preference code or something like that, you certainly can, but this is how we've gone forward since it's people's tax dollars, is low bid is low bid.
Right.
I do have a question. Now, this is a skid loader and a compact wheel loader, so actually different vehicles that I'm seeing on here. So, it's replacing a skid loader?
Correct.
Okay. So?
Can I interrupt for just a moment? I'd like to just pull this out since we've got this much discussion. So, let's withdraw number one and make it a separate item to follow this. So, we've got a motion and a second pending discussion on item number one that's been effectively pulled. So, on that initial motion and a second, any other discussion about the other items? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, all but, all items two through 20 on the first motion. Item number one, individual, go ahead Heather.
So, I just noticed, like I said before, one's a skid loader, another one is a compact wheel loader, so it's a completely different vehicle. So, it's kind of like, in my mind, I'm looking at a car and then we're getting a truck. So, can you explain? I understand wanting to update these items. Clearly, if it's a 2003, we want new equipment, but one's a skid loader and one's a compact wheel loader, so can you elaborate that on that?
Yep. Over time, needs change, and so we have like a fleet equipment committee, and so this is being driven by our Public Services Superintendent, our Street Sanitation Mormon, and our head mechanic. And so, when equipment ages out and it's time for replacement, we take this opportunity to assess our continuing needs, and they felt that our needs have changed. And this is not an additional piece of equipment. This is replacing a skid loader with a little bit larger, more versatile, compact wheel loader. So, it is their recommendation that this is in the best interest of the city going forward to meet our needs of our departments that utilize it.
Thank you.
Could you give an example of something the compact wheel loader could do that the skid loader would not be able to do?
Well, you can see it's articulated, so it's a, has a bigger lifting capacity, bigger bucket, those types of things. So, again, this is something that as our community continues to grow, as equipment ages out, we reevaluate and make adjustments going forward.
Anything further with item number one individually? I'll seek a motion for approval of item number one.
I will move approval of item number one from the consent calendar.
Second? Second? Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll go with the, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item passes. Move on to item number H under Regular Business at this time. Review of Fiscal Year 2019 City of Waverly Audit by Chad Ranier from Williams &amp; Company, P.C.
Good evening. I said that I'm Chad Ranier with Williams &amp; Company. We audited the financial statements for fiscal year 2019 and kind of thought, just kind of flipped through the report and kind of highlight just a few items here. City Waverly does a full CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, so that's more intensive than just a normal audited financial statement that there's going to be, there's going to be an introductory section. There's also some statistical sections in the back that shows a 10-year, basically 10 years' worth of stats that help you develop some kind of trends and everything like that. And so, right on page one, that, this is a letter of transmittal, so basically, this is where management can kind of talk about what's going on in the City of Waverly. That's not really all, you know, financial based or anything. You can talk about the local economy, long-term planning, et cetera. So, on page six, this is the Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting given by the GFOA or the Government Finance Officers Association. I know the City of Waverly has received this numerous years going back, ever since I've been with Williams Company, I've been there since 2011. I know it's been that you guys have received it previous years to that as well, and we did submit it to GFOA for the 2019, and I expect to get the same certificate for the 19 report. Page eight is our opinion. If you look at the auditor's responsibilities paragraph, the second sentence says that we did not audit the financial statements of the hospital and Waverly Utilities, that their auditors provided their reports to us, and we were making reference to their report. Let's see here. If you go to page nine, the opinion, paragraph, it says in our opinion, and then based on the reports from other auditors, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So, that's the clean opinion, the unmodified opinion that you want, so you guys received a clean opinion for fiscal year 19. Page 11 is management's discussion analysis. You know, this is probably 100 and some 135 pages. You know, if you really don't want to read through it all, that, I'd probably go to page 11 first. That has a lot of good financial highlights and comparative information, some graphs and charts to kind of show what happened in 19 compared to 18, and an explanation of why things changed. Then, on page 21, this is, 21, 22, and 23 is the government-wide financial statement, so it's basically if government was on full accrual, just like a business, is, this is your balance sheet and income statement, that you really can't make any management decisions, that this is a 10,000-foot level, that basically, if you wanted to compare City Waverly to another city about the same size, that this shows what you owe, or what you own and what you owe. Page 24, this is the start of the fund financial statements, and every fund is shown individually in this report, but the smaller funds are in the back. This shows the larger funds, and the smaller funds are summarized in the other governmental funds column. One thing that we always like to point out for the general fund, the unassigned fund balance of 2.8 million, when we divide that into the general fund expenses, that City Waverly had 183 days in unassigned fund balance. So, what that means is that if you did not receive any more revenue from July 1st, you would have enough resources to operate for 183 days. And, you know, that, we kind of take a look at when you receive property taxes, and so that, you know, September, October, and so you guys have a good fund balance to keep operating, and so everything looks strong there.
Chad, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's the recommended number of days?
It's, they're really not, like, that's kind of why we look to see when the property taxes are received, as kind of just a goal, basically, a rule of thumb to try to hit. Last year, you guys were at 210 days, went down, but it's still, it's nothing to be concerned about or anything like that. I've seen, just a school that had 70 days in fund balance, and I said, I told them, the school board, that I wasn't concerned about that. You know, if you start getting like 10 days and all that, that would be a concern, but, yeah, there's no reason to be concerned about this.
Thank you.
Page 30 is the, just the utility financial statements there. Start on page 38 is the notes to the financial statements, that there's a lot of good detail here that if you wanted to dig deeper into any of the numbers on the financial statements, you can find its note in there, that, I know that the GASB, which sets the standards for how governments need to report items, they're starting to realize that the notes are starting to eat the financial statements essentially, that they're just, they just keep adding note after note after note, and I know that they're trying to look at to try to get a more efficient notes there, but, you know, some of the notes, like the pension note, is probably 10 pages just by itself, and so that can really add to the size of the audit report. Page 84, this is where the non-major fund-level statements start, so I said before that in the beginning, in the front of the report, it was summarized in the other non-major governmental funds, and this is where all the remaining small funds are shown. Then, page 101 through 131, this is where the statistical section starts, and so they said that if you didn't read the whole report, probably the MDNA and the stats section would be a good spot to look at because it can kind of give you, you can be able to see some trends in how the city has gone through different areas over the last 10 years. Page 132, that, this is basically a report showing that, stating that we have to get an understanding of the city's internal controls and how they operate, but we do not put an opinion on the internal controls, that that's not part of this, that we don't put an opinion on it, but we do get an understanding of the opinion, of the internal controls. I think that's all I got. Is there any questions?
What percentage is material weakness defined as? I kind of know what it is for private, but government?
Well, there was a, and I know this is, and we should probably explain that, I know this material weakness isn't there every year, and a lot of cities have it, and I don't know of staff, if you can elaborate on that, but? Well, the material weakness, that, on page 134, the material weakness is that we've proposed and city posted journal entries, and so basically, it's an unattainable standard. If we have one journal entry that's material, you're going to have that finding, that our firm audits between 75 to 100 governmental entities in a year, and I could probably count on one hand the number that does not have that finding, and it's because, you know, they have a lot, much larger staff than what you have, and, you know, even in those cities that we sometimes don't have that finding, lots of times, we do have that finding because nobody's perfect, and so it's just a matter of?
Is that a certain percentage, though? I mean, because there's going to be a mistake in financials.
Well, that, basically, in the front, like, so that we have different opinion units, so the general fund is one opinion unit, and then any of the other major funds, it's another opinion unit, and so based on the size of that fund, we set a scope, and it will change every year based on the size of that fund, and so there's this calculation that set what that scope is, and then if there's anything that's above that, then we have to propose a journal entry. But I said that it changes from year to year.
So, there's like an acceptable range of?
Yeah, because if we find something and we know, you know, it's 100 bucks?
Right.
But yet, in the general fund, well, that's very small to the financial statements as a whole, and so we want, you know, because we provide, we don't provide an absolute that these are absolutely correct because it's reasonable, because we would be here all year if we had to look through every single transaction.
Was there anything about our accounting practices that made you concerned about?
No, nothing. And some of the journal entries are just how you guys operate, that you guys on a day-to-day operate on a cash basis. Well, this is not a cash basis report, and so some of the entries are to basically convert it from cash basis to accrual, and some of it is? And some of it is that the cash basis might not be the full gap, you know, that, you know, for debt, for example, that when you guys issue debt, you're just hitting the cash. But yet we would have to gross that up to up to the par value because there was going to be some bond issue costs. So that was just one example that, of one of the journal entries that we had, that it was just a, that the amount of cash that you received was hitting the revenue account. But then we basically had to gross it up to par value because there was bond issue costs that had already been taken out of there. So like I said, it's just a matter of how the city's operating.
It's why we're audited, honestly. There's things that we can be doing in one year as directed by our auditors. GASB changes a rule, we no longer can do it that way. And so as we've completed those, we were told, well, you come in with rule changes, there are no findings. So next year, we'll do it as instructed here. If GASB changes another rule, this is a continual cycle.
Yeah.
I think it's to keep GASB busy, but honestly, it's just more and more regulated by us. Every time there's a rule change, every time there's a journalist found or two, we have this finding.
That I know when, I think GASB 34, which is the big one that made the government-wide financial statements, that was issued in 2004. When I started, in 2011, they were up to 54. And so they issued 20 different standards in that time. From 2011 to now, I know they're on GASB 90. And so they're just really cranking them out, too. And I think there, a lot of them are geared towards larger cities, but you guys fall under that umbrella as well.
And I think it was clear in here that, you know, the limited staff that we have to keep up with those standards constantly changing, it's kind of like the tax code. You know, you file your taxes and you know something, the IRS isn't coming after you because of the recent change, so.
We're willing to hire a bunch more staff to get rid of this if you want, but I don't know that if easily, that's the best way to approach it.
You talked to these six and the one that's absent.
Sure, sure. Tim's all in, he doesn't know it, but he's all in. He's ready to jump.
He looks it.
So that's the unfortunate side, though, seriously, it's hard to be perfect on this. The ones that don't have it, we're lucky not perfect. That's the best way to say it.
Exactly, yep.
Well, it sounds like you don't have to be perfect to be excellent-
Correct.
-in this business.
Yep, and that's why you got the excellent reporting certificate, so.
Jennifer, do you have anything? A simple shake of the head is fine, unless you have something you want to add.
No, I think everything won't.
Glad it's done.
Your last one.
Ready for next year.
Well, thanks for all your work.
Thanks. That's all I have unless there's anything else. Cindy, you got any questions for him?
Nope, I think he was very thorough.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number two under regular business, section H. Resolution 20-04 is a resolution approving the cancellation of the real estate contract and authorizing payment of $443,850 to the Bremer County Fair Association for a quitclaim deed for the 40.35 acres of property.
I will, you're looking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move approval of resolution 20-04, approving the cancellation of the real estate contract and authorizing payment of $443,850 to the Bremer County Fair Association for a quitclaim deed for the 40.35 acres of property.
Second.
Motion, second, council discussion.
Can we have someone put this in context for us?
Is there any sense at all that the fair board will be coming back to the city for additional funds? Anybody want to take that on?
We have fair board members present if I'd like to discuss that as well, but we've not had any conversations that would lead us to believe that would happen in this meeting.
Well, good evening. This is Roy Peterson, lifelong resident of Waverly and also a 20-plus-year veteran of the fair. As to, I'll get right to the chase here, I guess, to that question we would love to come back and ask for more. Time will tell on that. It really is, once we get into the campaigning, we'll see how things flow. And I will say this, that because of the scope change, things are actually looking up. Just in the last two to three weeks, we had an additional 75,000 just come in, just in some cold calls made to some eastern county residents. So, you know, just getting maybe to some of the Champions Ridge versus the new east side opportunity here is, I was a charter member on the Champions Ridge Board. I started that with about six other individuals. And it looked like it was going to be the best project out there, and it really was a great project. But over time, we realized that maybe we were at a disadvantage due to the size of the scope of the project and also the east and north side county, which by the way, we're a fair, we support the county, Waverly fits into that. But there's seven other small towns in this county that we need to please, and we were getting some feedback that we needed to relocate closer to the center. So I tell you what, it's been a long, long, drawn-out process, but we got ourselves a heck of a project and a heck of a location today. So we feel very encouraged that it's going to come in, it's still going to be an uphill battle, believe me, when you're asking money from people, it takes time and energy. But there's several of us, we have the vice president and the president here, they're new blood to the executive board. So I think we're all going to push really hard to make this happen. And some good news about this resolution is that we actually picked up an additional 10 acres of ground for about the same kind of money that we had on the west side. So we would have, we would have been coming back to you and purchasing an additional 10 acres out there if we stayed on the west side. And that really wasn't in the car, because we needed some parking if the ball, you know, was to pull out. So I just wanted to say, it looks very encouraging. Infrastructure's much better there on the 39th Street location. Access to the property now could be up to two, maybe even three, but let's go with two driveways off of 39th. We don't have DOT to get involved if we wish not to come off of Highway 3. There are just a lot of advantages here. And you put us on the east side of town, we're also on the egg side of Waverly. So our neighbors out there have already expressed interest in our fair being out there. So I think ultimately, we got ourselves a doable, a doable project, so. I don't know if there's any other, that's a general, just quick synopsis, but.
I'd just like to say that, you know, the fair is a great asset to have here for the city of Waverly, and I'm very pleased that we can, you know, partner with the fair board in getting this thing done. And I agree, that's a great location, and I'm really excited to see what you guys do with it out there.
I'm glad you said that. I wanted to clear something up for those who are watching and listening. There has been a lot of, you know, Facebook's a great tool, but it's also, sometimes you don't see both sides of the story on Facebook, okay? And I'll use that as an example. I believe Waverly has done one heck of a job. This group has done one heck of a job supporting the fair and supporting that project. And actually, they were probably our largest stakeholder in that project down on the west side. I believe now with this 120, you're showing that you support us again on the east side. So I just wanted to clear that up. There's always been some, some language going back and forth about the city wasn't behind there, the city doesn't want us. That is not the case. We've had a partnership for 20-some years with Parks and Rec, and I don't see that. We'll see that change out there, but at the same time, if somebody raised their hand, I believe the city will be behind us, so, and help us out in some fashion, some way. So I just wanted to clear that up. City's done really remarkably well. Plus, they were our banker for a while, so you can't beat that.
So maybe a question for Bill. Are we now, I mean, what's the status of the, I don't know if it's called the Champions Ridge project, but that land on the west side of town, is that now, I want to say, completely clean and completely ours? Is there any more kind of projects involved going on there, or is this pretty much finished?
When we buy this property back, when we cancel the contract, we'll own the whole property.
Okay.
And there's no commitments at this point.
Okay, thank you.
So I think going back to Brian's initial question, and maybe James and Bill can address this, that 120,000, I don't want to get into the mud, but just articulate the benefit to that, I mean, it was in our council minutes or our council packet here. If you can articulate what that really looks like and does.
First of all, the contract itself provided for that 120 is the county contributed the same amount. And the county has indicated that they are not going to withdraw their 120, that they're going to keep their 120 in. So the presumption, you know, I guess the expectation on our part was that the city had intended to do that all along, and it's still a project within the city limits. Now, had they moved somewhere else, it may have been a different discussion, I think. But the fact that they're still going to be within our city limits, we're still going to be working with them, I put it in there that I think the staff recommends, that the staff definitely recommends that. Certainly, it's the council's decision.
Right. I just wanted to articulate that that $120,000 was not part of this, that it's staying there in support of the fair, that we do have a financial showing there, so.
Yeah, the original purchase price was the $443,500, as shown. We provided 120,000 on credit at the time off our books as we owned it. We'd like to extend that forward as well and not just withhold that, so that we still remain committed financially to this.
Correct.
Well, and I'm glad, I'm glad they'll benefit from the extensions we've been doing out there for the infrastructure sewage and, you know, that'll help.
Just for the record of people being here, can you have both of those two gentlemen that are new to the board just come up and introduce themselves as being present? I'd appreciate that. Sorry to put you on the spot. You don't have to give a dissertation, just introduce yourself.
Josh Peterson, president, and I also live in Waverly.
Thank you.
I'm Josh Gilbert, been in Waverly my whole life and just as of November, and the new vice president of the fair board.
Perfect. Thank you very much for getting that. Any other further discussion? You guys can have a seat if you want.
I'd just add, one more is, we do have a high-level concept already put together, and we're in the process of hiring an architect and our engineer group, engineering group. So I just wanted to let you know, it's not a clean slate yet. We've actually taken what we learned from the west side and we applied it to the east side, and this sketch here shows that it's going to fit really nice. So we're in good shape, so, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Any other further council discussion on this item two?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that those that talk to me about the fair location, they really appreciate that it's staying in Waverly, and I think that it's the right thing to do for the city to invest that 120,000 back into the fair or keep it in the fair.
If any council member hasn't really sat down and talked to a board, even a citizen too, they've got some exciting stuff coming up in the, you know, in the long-term plan with this, and it's really going to be awesome.
Anything else before we do a roll call vote? Crowe?
Vote for.
Yes. Yes.
Skenberg?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Blazer?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Resolution 20-04 passes six to zero, one absent. Item number three on regular business, resolution 20-05, a resolution approving the renewal of an agreement between the city of Waverly and Wortburg College for citizen use of the Wortburg tennis facility.
I'll move approval of resolution 20-05 as read by the mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Second.
Council discussion.
Could you, somebody clarify, it says 100 or 1,500 paid annually, and then it goes on and says, city pays the balance 50% of the cost, so is that $1,500 or, and then 50%?
What that is, is each year, the city pays $1,500. That goes into an account kind of as credit with Wortburg, where when they get their courts resurfaced, the city is responsible for 50% of the resurfaced cost. So for instance, if it's $30,000, we're responsible for $15,000. Over the years, we've paid 1,500 each year, so that goes towards credit for that.
Basically transfers it off of our books to them. That way, if we were to terminate, they do have some equity in the use.
So in that example, if we had a 10-year span, we already paid our 15,000, we'd be paid up. If it turns out it needs to be sooner, we'd have to pay the balance that we didn't pay already. So we're kind of renting to get there, and when it's done, then we finish.
Historically, what, how often have we resurfaced those courts?
The last time that they did it was in 2014, I believe. Before that, it was about nine or 10 years before that. Historically, it's about every seven to eight years is what they give for the lifespan of, you know, of the courts, but yeah, that's kind of typical. Lots of factors go in, you know, to how often it happens, so.
I'm not a tennis player by any means, but I know we have tennis courts at the high school. What's the use there and are we paying attention to those tennis courts as much as we're paying attention to the Wortburg tennis courts and the use of that? Does, can anybody give me feedback on that?
I know that they do obviously have tennis courts at the high school. They are not lit. So there's, I believe, two courts at Wortburg that have lights, which are paid for by the city. Our partnership has always been with Wortburg since, I believe it was 1981. As for the courts at the high school, yes, they're there and people could use them if they wanted to.
And they're not lit, though?
They are not, no.
Is there any way we could utilize those or, I mean, I'm giving Wortburg $1,500 annually, and then we have this really nice school with tennis courts. What money can be put towards that to make it lit and public could use those and spend the money at our high school?
Sure. If we were to do that, we may end up in a partnership that would look the same as, you know, what we have with, currently with Wortburg. I have the Wortburg tennis coach, Chris, you're going to have to help me out in your last name, Chris, but-
Augustus.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll be the tennis guy. So some things are that new lights are really expensive, like more than you think. It's been a while since I've been around a program that's tried to put some up. I used to coach Indianola High School. They had 11 courts, to light those was like a $100,000 project. So I kind of see where you're going. The other thing is that the benefit of having both facilities up and running and like always keeping these up to date and is the high school uses both. Waverly's luckily enough to be one of the facilities in the state that gets chosen to host a lot of like, they're called districts and sectionals, like things where they're trying to qualify for state. So when you do that, you've got a lot of players that are trying to play matches and it's an all-day thing even with, but the reason they get to host that is because they have their six at the high school and they're counting on our eight as well, which is another reason that, you know, we want to keep having, it's hard for us to resurface because we don't get a ton of fundraising for our program. We're not wrestling or football. So we want to keep those up to date and up to regulation. Like, things can happen to the courts where there'll be like a crack through the thing and all of a sudden, you've got a kid trying to qualify for state and there's a court that's not real or a pole that's sinking or, you know, some other issues. So I think that that's part of the benefit of helping Wortburg and keeping that agreement. Also, I don't know why, but everybody plays at Wortburg, including the high school kids. So it's all summer, the place is pretty busy. I've been out there on nights and it's crazy, but like a Thursday night, there'll be seven to the eight courts will be full. And I give lessons throughout the day and there'll be, you know, people coming in and out of there throughout that time as well. It's a popular place, especially in the summer, and that's when Wortburg isn't really using it, that's when the city is getting all the benefit and all the time. I know that there are regular groups of four to six people that get together weekly, anytime the weather's nice enough to get out there and play. It's some senior citizens that, you know, they just have their tennis night and they do that. And then, like I said, a lot of the high school players are out there as well.
And Chris, for the, like, for city youth who are learning to play tennis-
Yeah.
-through the W program, so are they using both the indoor and the outdoor courts?
If it rains, they'll go inside. But yeah, the city youth, like through the W, they're all coming on the Wortburg courts as well. And then, actually, any kids that are taking high school lessons are coming through me or maybe one of my assistant coaches, and that's all at the Wortburg courts as well. or maybe one of my assistant coaches, and that's all at the Wortburg courts as well. So that, I mean, it's really their second home. Those high school kids are on our courts quite a bit as well. And they'll even be days when, oh, so let's say that the high school team has a competition, and they want to play on our courts because then they can have more matches played, like, let's say JV matches, kids that wouldn't get to play otherwise, so maybe we'll trade them the facility for the day. And we've just sort of verbally kept that agreement up and kept that relationship with the high school coaches.
So you're telling me that the high school courts are also being utilized and kept up?
At the same time, yeah.
As well.
I think they resurfaced three or four years ago, and they're in pretty good shape right now, actually.
Okay. There's just no lighting out there?
There's no lighting, and, yeah, that is a good question. I don't know why everyone comes to Wortburg to use ours, but that's, that's just the way that it's been. I think some of it, now that I'm really thinking, is we got a little bit better wind coverage. I don't know if they know that, I know that.
Secrets out, yeah.
Yeah, maybe our colors are better, I don't know. Any other questions about, you know, how this goes down, or, I mean?
So basically, the city's investment in being able to play tennis is $1,500 a year?
Correct. $1,500 per year, and then that 50% when it's time to resurface.
If it's over and above the amount that we've put in the account.
Correct.
It's a great deal.
It's a good deal.
Getting Wortburg to take care of our bridges too for $1,500.
Got a bunch of aspiring engineers, so.
Chris, when do you expect the next resurfacing at Wortburg to be?
So the timeline for a resurface is typically four to eight years. I think we're on our sixth year. So it, it kind of depends, you know, even with the city's contribution, you know, we still have a job, which is to raise and find the other half, some from the Booster Club, some from other donors, you know, and, and, I mean, we're working on that now, but we don't know when we hit that target and when we decide to pull the trigger on it. But I, I would guess it, it's relatively soon.
Maybe we need to add a category to the quasi-community foundation fund for tennis court upkeep.
That's possible. And we are budgeting this year for possible resurface if it does need to be done in 2020. It could be this year, it could be 2021, but we are planning on budgeting for that.
For the difference.
Yes, for the difference.
Right. I, I think it makes sense that we have this instead of investing in building additional tennis courts, a property acquisition, or even properties that we own. I mean, it's $1,500, and we've got eight great facilities, parking and everything else, wing breaks.
Trees.
So, and here it says the current agreement ended in June 30th. That was just an oversight with?
Yes, that was an oversight.
Laying it on TAB?
TAB race, fall, sounds good. No, I did not realize that until just before August, and then kind of the perfect storm where I was new, the person at Wortburg that I needed to contact was new, so my email is lost somewhere as to the person who I contacted originally. And then, once it got to Leisure Services Commission, we didn't have a quorum, pushes us back again, and now here we are.
How good is this agreement good for?
It's five years.
Five years, okay.
It would make sense, and I don't know what the new terminate, or the expiration date is, but it doesn't seem to make much sense to me to have it end in the middle of the season of the summer, when it would be being used. Is there any way that that can be aligned outside of the middle, just in case there's oversight, just with legalities and those types of things?
Sure.
Is that based on the fiscal year, though? Is that why it ends?
I think that's probably why it ended there was fiscal, but...
It's fiscal year. You can make a calendar if you chose to do that instead, just amend it another six months extension to get to a calendar year, if that's preferable to council.
I'm just looking at...
When do you usually figure out that it needs to be resurfaced? And do you do that before the season, or when the season is done? You mean like fall, or?
Well, I haven't done this before. Okay, my understanding is that if we, it would be contingent on, do we have the money? And then, do we have the money and time to actually book somebody to come and do it? So there's, there's not a, there's, there's maybe a few places that we would have access that could actually drive and come do this for us and, and contract that out, but, I don't know. I mean, I'm really saying a lot of words because I'm thinking ahead on what we would have to do if this actually happened. When I talked to people, they said that they're, if we didn't know by like January or February, then it would be hard to get it for that upcoming summer. So I think that that's, you know, fall, winter is when we would be saying, okay, we're going to do this.
Anything further before we move for a roll call vote?
Do we want to amend this agreement, or give instruction to do that and bring it back, or are you okay with the five-year on the fiscal?
Has it been a problem? I mean, has the current calendar schedule been a problem?
I don't think it's been a problem up until, I mean, it was, it was a five, it was a five-year agreement, you know, that just ran out.
Right, right.
And, yeah, and I just didn't realize it at the time.
I think Adam's alluding to whether it ends in the middle of the year or in the outside of the season, and...
If it's not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, I don't think, I think it's looking fine just like this.
That's fine. All right, Carl?
Perkin?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Resolution 20 dash 05 is approved, six yeses, zero noes, one absent. Moving forward to item number four on the regular business, resolution 20 dash 06, a resolution approving a lease agreement between the City of Waverly and Lonnie L. Even for 2020 for ground, rental ground within the city airport safety zone. Looking for a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 20 dash 06, approving a lease agreement between the City of Waverly and Lonnie L. Even of $225 per acre for the 2020 rental ground within the city's airport safety zone.
Second.
Motion and a second. Hearing no discussion, move to roll call vote.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen? Yes.
Resolution 20 dash 06 is approved, six yeses, zero noes, one absent. Moving forward to number five on general business, review of the council policies and I can kick this off that I reviewed them, and I didn't have anything pressing at my time of reviewing them that I would want to change. I don't mean to imply that anybody else doesn't have something that they want to discuss.
Staff does not have anything brought forward for changes as well, just so you're aware, this is not a staff-driven elective.
Correct.
I have a number of items that I would like to propose and make this go a little faster by printing them out in advance, so.
Thank you.
I don't know what the procedure is on this, since this is not a resolution. I assume this will be coming up for a resolution at some future meeting.
We can assess where changes to occur, we will redraft and bring the council for official approval.
Well, most, most of these are, are not really changes, I think they're just for clarification in, in the procedures. The first one is dealing with cancellations. I noticed right off the bat that we're dealing with changing the meeting from February 8th, or no, tonight's meeting actually, because we are actually holding this meeting on a national holiday. And if you read Section 1.02, it says if a regular council meeting day falls on a legal holiday, the meeting shall be adjourned to the succeeding Monday. So technically, we're in violation right now. What I would suggest is changing, re-titling Section 1.12, which currently reads emergency cancellations and adjourned meetings, to say cancellations and adjourned meetings, and basically place the responsibility with the mayor to cancel a meeting because it falls on a holiday, or because of inclement weather, or for any other issues that are significant enough to cancel the meeting, but that would be the mayor's responsibility to cancel the meeting. So if the mayor decided to have a meeting on Christmas Day, and Christmas Day is on a Monday, I mean, that's the mayor's decision.
And so you leave it in May that he doesn't have to cancel it if he doesn't want to?
That's correct, yeah. So that, that would be my suggestion there. Section 1.02 then, the last sentence reads, if a regular council meeting day falls on a legal holiday, or if a quorum is not present, the meeting shall be adjourned to the succeeding Monday at 7:00 PM. Well, actually, that is really a duplication of what we have in a couple of other places.
Right.
So just to clear that up, I think that maybe should be deleted, because we do then have that same language. If my suggestion in Section 1.12 is adopted, we have the same language there. And also then in Section 1.05, where it's talking about a quorum. So if we do not have a quorum, that states that the quorum is not present, and okay, then basically the cancellation and adjourned meetings would go to the next Monday. So, I probably didn't say that very well. It's basically placing what happens if a meeting is canceled or adjourned just in one section.
So you need to add something about how you take attendance, and if you don't have a quorum, then you can adjourn.
No, no, the quorum is here. Is four council members are present eligible to vote, shall constitute a quorum. But it also, if the quorum is not, if we don't have a quorum, then the meeting shall be adjourned to a later time or date, and Section 1...
You just need to add a phrase about taking attendance, I think. That's the only thing that's missing.
On, on the quorum?
Yeah. That's in Point 05.
Okay.
So that you make sure you record that some people did show up.
Well, the names that shall be recorded, the names of those in attendance should be recorded.
Shall be recorded.
Yeah, just add that phrase. And you could still, you could add it to the, to the Point 02, right?
Well, actually, maybe I'm not understanding your comment, but that, that language is already in 1.05. A quorum is not present, the names of those in attendance should be recorded.
Oh, okay, so you want to delete O2 and leave O5?
Yes, yes. I don't want to make a mistake with O5.
I thought you were doing it the other way around.
No, no, no.
Okay, gotcha.
Consolidation.
Oh, I'm sorry for that. The, the next one, Section 1.04A, that's just a typo, and I normally don't bring up, try not to bring up typos, but this one was pretty obvious.
As long as we're doing everything else, you might as well throw it.
I might as well, yeah, throw it in the mix. So, the mayor pro temp shall have the powers and duties of the mayor. Section 1.10, oh, it implied in that section that if the mayor disagreed with a council member, did not agree to put an item on the agenda, that the council member is then, the mayor should inform the member that a second council member's support is necessary, but it doesn't really say what happens. So I tried to, to make that more explicit, that if a second council member agrees in writing that should be on the agenda, that the city clerk shall put it on the agenda. It's no longer the discretion of the mayor or the city administrator.
I like that.
So. 2.08A, this we might have, want to have a little discussion about, so let me talk about that a little bit further. Section 10.10, the very last one, 2.10E, that just clarifies that if there's a temporary committee member who's removed from the committee, that that's done by the council. It didn't really indicate who actually removed that person from the committee. I assume that's the council that would do it, but I suppose it could be the mayor, or the city administrator, or someone else, but, and I'm not even sure that that is something that we, is, is probably that important to have in there, but you get to a situation where if you want it to be specific, you want it to be specific. And I can imagine some situations where people would, would ask, you know, why they're being removed. So I think since it's the authority of the city council to put them on these committees, it should be the authority of the city council that takes them off. Now, Section 2.08A, and I've really struggled with this because we've had issues, and this deals with, you know, how we interact with people that come to the public forums and have a comment in a public forum. And, I mean, it's, it's currently our procedure that we, the council does not interact with people who are, are making comments in the public forum, but I'm not sure that the people who are making comments know that it's not, we're not allowed to interact with them. So the point of this is to basically have the mayor announce at the beginning in a public forum that this is simply for the, gathering information and getting opinions from the public, and other than maybe questions for clarification, that no action will be taken on their comments at that meeting. I think a lot of people expect they're going to come, they're going to make comments, and the council will immediately vote on something and, and do something for them. So I think it's important that they realize in some manner that no action will be taken at that meeting, but that there will be some kind of, of response. To reference the Section 2.16.2, and I don't want to belabor this too long, but, this basically deals with the response of how we as council people respond to citizen requests. Now, I don't know how, what the rest of you do, and, and the people who are new probably really haven't faced this issue too often, but when I have a citizen that has an issue, I bring it to the city administrator and discuss it with, with the city administrator. If I feel it's something that is worth, worth bringing up, not, that doesn't always happen, some things are not things that really, anything the city can do about. Some of complaints, it's too cold, well, there's nothing the city can do about it. I'm not going to bring it to the city administrator, but I don't...
We can try, though.
I mean, I don't bring it to a council meeting unless it's an item that's put forward for some kind of action. So if you're reading this section, it basically says that when there is something that is brought to a council member, we should be bringing it up at the council member comments at the end of the meeting, and then have the council vote on whether this is an item that should be, be carried forward. I, I have some difficulty with that because that's not something I'm going to do, and I don't want to have something in the procedures that I really am not going to follow. The same way with number two is how a citizen at a public hearing is, is communicated with, and it's the same kind of situation where the council will vote after the, the person has made their presentation to determine whether we want to have something done or not. Well, we don't do that, and we really have already said that we're not going to be making a determination. And the same way with the third one then, is if there's a formal written petition, you know, that one, obviously, we're probably going to have to deal with at, at a council meeting if there's a formal petition. But I guess I feel that, and maybe nobody else has this concern, but that Section 2.16 maybe should be thought out a little bit more of how we actually handle citizen input, both as individual council members and at the public forums. I, I think that it would be better if we handled that citizen input maybe not as publicly at a council meeting until we've been able to visit with the city administrator about what the ramifications of those things are. But on the other hand, particularly with the public input sections, we don't want people to feel that they're being ignored.
I think you're raising multiple issues, because there's multiple ways that citizens contact us.
Right.
I think that the first point you made about whether we exchange dialogue or ask questions of people who present, I think last meeting was a perfect example of, of that. So the, the citizen came to make comments about the placement of the Ball Diamonds near the soccer complex, and I sat here as a member of that commission, knowing that if I could answer some of his questions right then and there, that would solve a lot of confusion, and, but knowing that we're not really supposed to engage unless asked to directly by the mayor, I kept my mouth shut until the end of the meeting. Of course, he'd already left, but I could say, you know, the blue circles on the plan are not pawns, because that was one of his questions. And so I do think that it would be helpful to have a little leeway, maybe at the discretion of the mayor, that if there's somebody sitting here who could answer a basic question, great. I think we have to be careful of not getting into debate with people when they're just trying to make a comment or ask a question, but, but I do think there's a place for, for simple information gathering or, or giving that would be helpful during that. there's a place for simple information gathering or giving that would be helpful during that time, because usually people don't stay. They go home after they make their comment, and then it's difficult to follow up. And who knows if they're watching on TV, or if it's going to get quoted in the paper later. So I do think there's, that's something I do think we should explore adding.
I do have to just say, that we do, this has a lot of respect for chapter 21, open meetings, open records. And is it being drawn out to then warrant, you know, be an agenda item? And if so, we need to pause, put it on a future agenda, and then address it. Unfortunately, that puts a time between the initial statement and that. Passion may have dropped off about that subject or whatever, or another decision may have been made, you know, by that time or something. But out of due respect for what we're allowed to do when it comes to agenda items, we have to keep that in check. So, but I do, I do get that desire to interact with people. And your explanation at the end of the meeting was very good, but it does tread very close to, we may need to be having it as an agenda item, just to keep us from violating any of those regulations, so.
And I think the proper way of handling citizen comments directly to a council member would be through the city administrator and the mayor, that if it warranted discussion with the council, that it be put on the agenda.
Correct.
Rather than simply being discussed at the end of the meeting as a kind of a tail end, well, I think we should, you know, talk to this person about, you know, what their issue was. So I think that I would feel more comfortable if that item one were worded something differently about, that we're going to vote at the council meeting, whether this should be an item that we want to move forward or not. The second thing about the public forum, that causes me a lot more problems, though, because people come here, and for many people, it's very difficult for them to come and stand at that podium and talk to this group. I know I don't consider myself to be very scary, but some of the rest of you maybe are, I don't know. And not only that, but also be on television and being seen by their friends and neighbors. And they expect to have some kind of reaction from the council. And I don't know how that's handled, because we do have the obligation also, that we have to go through the proper procedures to be able to discuss those kinds of, those kinds of issues that people bring.
Correct.
Well, I do like the idea of putting something in there, of letting the public contributors know that we are not going to be responding to them. Because I know a lot of times, I feel like I've been accused of being, you know, out of touch and unsympathetic, because I don't like respond to the things they say, even though, you know, we're not allowed to respond to the things they say. So I think it would be nice to put in some verbiage just to make it clear that
We're not ignoring them.
To remind the public speakers that, you know, we can't get into a dialogue with them.
And I don't have a vote to approve this, but I would be in support of during those times if it was, you know, a direction from you, Brian, to me, that, hey, I would like to ask for clarification, and we'd go after it that way, instead of just a free-for-all.
Yeah. I do believe, if I felt like I could ask, you know, may I have liberty to respond?
Yeah, absolutely. We just need that, that's what Rod's getting at, is that
For information purposes only, not for
I think you can do that. If you answer a question, that's one thing. If it becomes now a debate back and forth, then you've got to stop it, and we can't continue that way.
Right.
It's probably the job of the mayor to make sure that that doesn't get into a debate.
Right, right.
So that's why I like the idea of, you know, requesting from the mayor, you know, may I respond, or may I ask a question, or something along those lines before actually, before jumping in.
In respect of making sure that we follow, you know, chapter 21, I will never take it against anybody sitting up here or staff out here to interject, say, hey, we probably need to refrain from further conversation, put it on the agenda. I just want to make that known, so.
Those are my two cents worth.
So I like pretty much everything that Rod is recommending. I do have a question about that 2.10E, that the temporary committee members may be removed from the committee by a resolution of the council. Who puts people on those committees? Are those mayoral appointments typically?
They're usually approved by the council, aren't they?
Well, they're mayor appointments that are approved by the council.
Yeah.
So would the reverse be the case here, where it'd be the mayor recommendation to remove them from the committee and approve by the council? Is that a similar path you would follow to undo it?
Yeah, that makes more sense than a resolution.
It'd just be the mayor making that point at the next meeting.
Right.
So at the recommendation of the mayor by resolution of the council.
Right.
Just add that phrase.
Yeah.
By resolution of the council, or approval of the council, or?
By recommendation.
By approval of the council.
Whatever we did to put them on, we do the same.
That's how we take it, yeah.
We do the reverse.
Whatever we did.
Get them off.
Bill can polish the language.
So I'm going to ask Bill, is there anything else in here that you think are worried about or concerned?
Well, actually, looking at, if we're going to work with the first section on the council meetings, when you have a meeting that's being changed from the first to the second meeting, it's easy to say we're transferring the meeting from the first Monday to the second Monday. But if you cancel a
A third.
Third, and you go to the fourth, you can't really do it that way. What you could do is transfer the agenda to the next meeting. And that's basically what happens in those situations where it's a cancellation. So it's not really using the right verbiage, because either it's redoing the meeting for the next Monday, or it's adding those agenda items to the
The next Monday.
The next Monday's agenda, which I think is the same thing. I don't think we really have to explain it. I mean, that that's what we're doing, but that's in fact what happens.
You could probably articulate that why in the road in that.
And I think the legal holiday thing was more of a defined, what the city takes as legal holidays.
As opposed, clarify that, that if
And if we're going to do that
Is Presidents' Day, right? Does the city take Presidents' Day? That's happening in February.
Yeah, I don't think so. And I, I mean, we have different ones than what the legal holidays are for actual holidays. So if we said under the city's policy for when the staff works, I mean, that's kind of what we're using as to when the staff has that holiday day. And that's what we use in the past.
A city-designated holiday.
Right.
Yeah, that would work.
So I could change that language to that.
Carla?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to interject too, I know that Christmas was brought up. Christmas is already addressed in our quote of ordinances. So in order to change that within this, we would need to change the ordinance as well, just to keep that kind of in check as well.
If it's changed from legal holiday to city holiday, I think I would take care of it, probably.
If we declare it's the day before, the day after, I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Right. Whenever the city takes a holiday, the council also takes a holiday.
Right.
We don't work on days that the city doesn't work.
I can refine that language.
We always work.
I do have one other question. This is a question and not a change. On the very end of page 23, there's a section, it has in parentheses, "to be enacted as a city ordinance." Has that been done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is a separate ordinance.
Okay.
6630.
So should the name of the ordinance be put in there?
This was put in originally to say you have to do this separately. And so that has been done separately, so you could actually remove that from
Okay.
the rules, and then add it as the body of the new ordinance, if you wanted to do it that way.
Well, I'm seeing there's lots of other places where there's, like, referring to which ordinance something came from, so I was
That was, that was just for the purpose of saying, we put it in the rules because it was already in the ordinance.
Yeah, we added that.
So we can leave the scene out, just say, as per 66.30.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that somebody hadn't slipped up, and we'd never approve that.
Yeah, I think these are good suggestions.
And definitely if there's something that's spawned from this, is the rest of you, this obviously is not an action item this evening, it's discussion, feel free to bring more forth
So resolution.
Directly, or back here, we can put it back on the agenda. So these were last approved in April of last year, was it not?
We did it in 2018.
I think it's just a one-vote approval.
Right.
So we'll just, I'll bring it back in February.
Yeah. Okay.
And as I recall, these don't have as much an expiration date as they go with the council. So every time there's a new council, the rules and procedures need to be approved, or?
If you choose to.
If we choose, right.
You could bring it up for adoption differently later in the year. There is no set timeline on them. This does and does not have to be approved.
Is that something that could be incorporated into this?
You mean, just put it in there that the rules will stay in place until they're
But they need to be reviewed when there's a new council member?
My thought was that until they are revised or removed, that they would still stay in place.
Stay in place.
Or wouldn't, it wouldn't expunge them, it would just request a review.
Right. And I think if anybody brings it up, if the mayor brings it up, or if the council wants to bring it up and say, we want to change it again, or revise it, or, then we can just do it every January. We can, we can think about it every January, and maybe we don't do it necessarily.
Perfect. It's on the agenda as a review of the council policies and procedures, and we should review it every time there's a new council, but we don't necessarily have to change the rules.
Right.
But there isn't anything that says we have to do that.
Correct, right.
Somebody just wants to
I think that's the question. Should we add something stating, as a new council see to, we shall review these, you know, take action, but at least look at them?
My question is that, right now, you'll have this council for two years at least.
Right.
But you might lose somebody in the meantime. I mean, the question is, do you do it, or do you just wait until somebody brings it up? And mostly, it'll be brought up when there's a new, when there's new people on the council.
Right. All that that's doing is automatically placing it on the agenda.
Right.
So it doesn't have to be two council members of the mayor, because, let's say, Anne left, and I don't want to put on the agenda nobody, and only one council member does. That would warrant it automatically coming back up.
So that wouldn't, it would just mean when the, right after the election of council members, we would put it on there to decide if anybody wants to make any changes. And then you really wouldn't do it if you, if you just lost one person for
Right.
You just basically wait for that person, if they wanted to raise any issues.
Can you remind me, is it distributed to the new council? Did we, we got it because we were going to revise it, but I can't remember.
Is it in fact that you folks got?
In the orientation, by news.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Regularly, there's an item number six, kind of discussing a little bit of this. Reassign the February 3, 2020, city council meeting date to February 10, 2020, due to federal caucuses. Seeking a motion.
I'll make a motion to reassign the February 3, 2020, city council meeting date to February 10, 2020, due to federal caucuses.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
I would like to amend that to say, due to Iowa caucuses, rather than federal caucuses, to be more accurate.
Very nice.
Okay.
I also wanted to mention that I will not be here that week, so I'm letting the presiding officer know by section 1.06
Got it.
That I will be out of town on business that week.
Okay.
For February 10.
Do we need to second for your motion?
I don't know if there was a second.
I'll second your motion, but it's Iowa caucus.
The amendment.
Amendment, sorry.
Do you want to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Vote the amendment, and if it passes, then you vote on the amended
Correct.
Resolution.
Gotcha.
Is that just a voice vote, or a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Voice vote on the amended, that is, approve the reassigning of the February 3, 2020, city council meeting date to February 10, 2020, due to Iowa caucuses. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. So now, discussion on the amended motion.
Correct.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our meeting will be on February 10, rather than February 3, with Council Member Glazer absent. Item number seven, approval of the mayoral appointments. These were added on post the original listing, but approved. The appointments of Bob Cousin and Butch Keye are reappointed to the Board of Appeals for terms ending January 20 of 2025. Seeking a motion for that.
I will move approval of the mayoral appointments. That's written by the mayor.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion, item is approved. Item number eight, approval of the reassigning of previously-approved council liaisons to the boards and commissions. What were the heritage days? Councilwoman Rothie, Historic Preservation Commission, Councilman Bergen, Golf Course Commission, Councilman Glazer. Seeking a motion for approval.
I will move to approve the council liaisons to the commissions as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, item number eight is approved. Reports from boards and commissions, item a, number one, is Leisure Services Commission minutes from October 17, 2019, Ball Diamond Task Force minutes of October 21, 2019, Airport Commission minutes of December 12, 2019, and the monthly financials for December of 2019. All received into record. Item J, staff updates.
Just a couple things for everyone. Thursday, January 30, at 5:30 PM, over here in the city center, we will be having a neighborhood meeting for the neighborhood that's adjacent to the proposed Ball Diamond complex. If anyone from the area would like to come and ask questions, there will be a lot of information there. We will have the engineers hall and hall there as well. They'll be able to address most of the questions that staff or the task force cannot. The other thing I'd like to talk about is just a reminder for the Candlelight Ski, again. That's going to be on Saturday, February 8, from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock PM. That's just starts behind Quick Start East. Walk out about a mile to a mile and a half. Turnaround Point with a nice campfire, and looks like we're going to have snow this year.
Garrett, does that start at 5, or at 3?
I'm sorry, it starts at 5. It's from 5 to 7.
The setup is usually 3.
Yep, sorry about that. I said that wrong. Yes, it starts at 5 o'clock PM.
Garrett, what was the date for the neighborhood meeting on the Ball Diamonds?
Sure, the neighborhood meeting is Thursday, January 30.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I believe I misspoke on that. Kayway Woods. It's okay. Anything else?
That's all for me.
Okay.
I think it's all we have for tonight, so.
All right. City council comments. I'm going to start with our guest council member, Cindy Campbell. Sorry, I skipped over you at the beginning.
I'm enjoying being back on as a guest council person. I think this is a good council. They're very thorough and asking good questions and serious about what they're doing. It's nice to serve.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here.
You bet.
Thank you. Rod?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
I do have something I wanted to remind the community about, the W's Fun Zone. They have on Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And this is a function that the W does for toddlers and preschoolers and their caregivers to have an indoor playground time on their open court that's in the fieldhouse at the W. So the staff sets up a bounce house, tricycle, scooter boards, balls, hula hoops, slides, all kinds of fun stuff. It's free for members, it's a dollar per child for non-members. And this is something that I think that benefits the community, helps kids keep their cardiovascular, practice their motor skills in the wintertime when they can't get outdoors. So I think it's a good, good thing that the W does for the community.
Can you review the front end of that again, that we've heard all the benefits?
It's, the W, it's called the Fun Zone. It's from 9 to 11, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And it's for toddlers and preschoolers. And it's free for members and a dollar for each child for non-members.
Perfect, thank you. Ryan?
Well, so today is Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. And I always like to think about what's going on. I have a number of quotes here from Martin Luther King Jr. that really inspire me. I'm not going to read them all, because there's, gosh, there's so many. "Rarely do we find men who willingly engage in hard, solid thinking. There's an almost universal quest for easy answers and half-baked solution. Nothing pains some people more than having to think. All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity and importance, and should be undertaken with painstaking excellence. If I cannot do great things, I can do small things in a great way. And never, never be afraid to do what is right." And never, never be afraid to do what is right, especially if the well-being of a person or animal is at stake. Society's punishments are small compared to the wounds we inflict on our soul when we look the other way." So I just want to kind of remind everybody of the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. and all the great things he did for this country. And if anyone wants to talk about city council business, I will be at the Beach House after the meeting, if anyone would like to share a beer with me.
Thank you, Brian.
I think I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anne? I promised a citizen I would remind the council to speak into their microphones and speak clearly, we all did a pretty good job of that tonight. This person had inquired about closed captioning, and Garrett was kind enough to get us some information about that, and I forwarded it to the rest of you tonight, but, but we all need to remember to do that, so. That's all I have.
Piggybacking off of that, I know that if they're watching on the newspapers, Facebook feed, it's not tied into our audio system, so it's solely dependent on what that phone picks up or the speaker in here, so it still warrants a little bit, but I'm going to kick back to Garrett, not to put you on the spot, but sledding hill.
We are open right now.
Excellent.
It's a little cold, but we're open.
Okay. I just wanted to close that out, so. Nothing else for myself, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.